Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Shirley Roebuck and I'm the Chair of the Chatham Kent Health Coalition. Uh, I'm also uh involved in the Wallaceburg Walpole Island Health Coalition. And I co-chair the Sarnia Lampton Coalition. Um, but I'm very pleased uh that our group is hosting this uh event along with the Ontario Health Coalition. Um, we feel that it's very important that all of our citizens in all areas of our provinces. Um, know what's happening with healthcare right now. And because I'm representing Chatham Kent tonight, I'm I'm going to talk uh about what will happen to the Chatham Kent community. If in fact privatization of hospital services is allowed to go unchallenged. When if there are um when a service is privatized, it is then moved into a standalone clinic, but not in your uh um community. These standalone clinics are going to be located in large cities. So this means, I mean, I'll take myself as an example, I'm a I'm a senior citizen, so if I need a cataract surgery, I'll have to travel to Windsor. Uh, if I fall down, if the cat trap trips me, and that's possibility, and I break my hip, I'll have to travel away from my home to receive a hip replacement that quite frankly has been done very successfully by a uh highly regarded team of orthopedic surgeons in Chatham Kent, but that'll all be gone. So if you take a lot of services out of a hospital, do you really have a hospital left? There'll be very few services left. We feel that it is important that public uh uh hospitals remain intact and the money that is being generated towards uh private clinics be given instead to our public hospitals, so they can become vibrant again and beacons in the in the community. So I'll stop there for a while. I'm sure I don't want anyone to leave because I'm boring you. Next up, we're uh we're going to have Alan Warrington speak. Alan is a registered nurse. Uh, he works uh with the home care uh section of healthcare. He is the Vice President for our region of the Ontario Health Coalition, and he's here tonight. So Alan, please.
Ontario Nurses Association.
Yes, Ontario.
Well, thank you very much. Sorry, thank you very much, Shirley. Um, so as Shirley uh um very nicely welcomed me, just for those who don't know, so I'm Alan Warrington um with the Ontario Nurses Association, so I'm a Board of Director uh with uh the portfolio of Region Five. Um, so this is southwestern Ontario, so I'm really, really um happy to be here today with you to have the opportunity to share what is happening in our healthcare system. And why we know that privatization is not the answer. So pardon me. Um, so just to let you know that uh the ONA represents over sixty-eight thousand nurses and healthcare professionals across this province. And we also include eighteen thousand nursing students that uh we also represent. At this point, anyone who's paying attention has heard it before. Our nurses and healthcare professionals have been stretched beyond the breaking point. We've been in crisis mode now for almost three years. And at some point, it is not a crisis anymore, it's just become the new reality. And I think we all know that this cannot be the new reality. We know from the new Canadian Health Institute for Health Information data in Ontario that we have the worst RN to population pardon me um ratio. So to give you an idea and to illustrate this, there are only a hundred and or sorry, eight hundred and thirty RNs per hundred thousand people is the national average. While here in Ontario, we have just six hundred and sixty-eight RNs per hundred thousand. That means just to get to the Canadian average, Ontario would need to hire almost twenty-five thousand more registered nurses immediately. So what does a staffing shortage of this magnitude look like for our province and in practice? It's become commonplace for nurses to be kept at the hospital for many hours after their shifts are supposed to end. Because the next shift is short-staffed. And it's not possible to transfer safe patient care when there's nobody around. We have nurses working on maternity floors that should have thirty-five registered nurses on that shift, but the new normal is to have only half, seventeen or eighteen. We have hospitals where there are more vacant RN positions there are than there are RNs on staff. And here in Sarnia Lampton, as with many of our border communities, more and more nurses and healthcare professionals are seeking employment across the border, which will only increase the problems that we see currently. We know that nurses are resilient and resourceful. We always put patient care first, and even in these difficult, extremely difficult times, our members always find ways to provide the care that they know all all patients need and deserve. But the cost of this burden is taking its toll. Early retirements are going up. New graduates are rethinking their career paths, and they're leaving after only one or two years on the job. Nurses are leaving to work at private agencies where they can ensure their work-life balance. There is a very real cost to healthcare, our healthcare system as this situation worsens. And now the Ford Government is using this crisis to justify their privatization agenda. Ford took an understaffed system and made it so, so much worse. He introduced Bill One Twenty Four, which caps the wages of many nurses and healthcare professionals violating our Charter rights. And Ford is refusing to work with the healthcare professionals to invest and implement a meaningful retention and recruitment plan, which leaves our system severely understaffed with no relief in sight. Across the country, Canadians pride themselves on world-class, universal healthcare system. We believe that access to healthcare should be based on your needs and not your bank account. Nurses and healthcare workers are strong advocates for public nonprofit healthcare because we know the devastating impacts of privatization. The most broken parts of our healthcare system are the ones that are already privatized, like long-term care and home care. Private healthcare will take us away from public care by pulling resources and staff from our public system. And as nurses, we've already seen this, as colleagues have left the public system to go work for private agencies. And we can't blame those nurses who make that choice. The agencies let them choose their own hours, they pay them more because conveniently enough, they're not subjected to Bill One Twenty Four and wage suppression legislation. But there's a serious cost. Those uh agencies charge outrageous prices to the public hospitals. They don't provide pensions, benefits, or sick days for those nurses. This undermines nursing as a stable career and undermines our healthcare su- system by siphoning off precious dollars to line corporate pockets. This will impact access and quality of care, and it hurts patients who can't afford to pay. And we cannot allow that to happen. Ontario's public healthcare system is not Doug Ford's to dismantle and sell off his corporate buddies. Our public healthcare system has been built up over generations and belongs to all of us. That's why the Ontario Nurses Association is here with you tonight and will continue to work hand-in-hand with our allies to fight for the investments we need in our publicly funded healthcare system so that everyone gets the care that they need and that they deserve. Together, we can stop Doug Ford's plans in its tracks. Thank you so much.
Um, thank you, Alan. Um, I'm just gonna add one thing, uh you were talking about uh the maternity ward where that had thirty-five RNs scheduled per shift and they were working with roughly half of that. I want everyone to know that that is happening in our backyard. There's not a shift that goes on in the Chatham ER or the Wallaceburg ER that doesn't have one or two vacancies. And to small community hospitals, that's huge. Okay, it's also the same in ICUs and on uh inpatient units. Anyway, I'm I have the privilege tonight of introducing the expert. Um, Natalie Mara is the Executive Director of the Ontario Health Coalition. She has been involved in this fight to save public healthcare for twenty-five years. Um, and I'm proud to fight by her side. Uh Natalie.
Thank you so much, Shirley, and thank you, Alan, everyone. It's really lovely to see um old friends here in the uh in the group that's participating um and uh some representatives of organizations. Um, and I hope that you'll speak as this meeting goes on, I won't take too, too much of your time, but just lovely to see you all. Um, and thanks for being here. I'll never forget. Um, I don't know, how many of you, can we take me off spotlight for just a second? Can people just raise their hand? How many of you were around when um we did the fight? We joined and helped, but locally, the fight to save the Wallaceburg Hospital, the emergency department. And how many of you were in the public meeting there where there were, you know, a thousand people in the room? It was unbelievable. And I think I'll never forget it, you know, they they sent this ministry like it was a consultant down. Um, and the consultant was trying to control this public meeting where they were trying to sell closing the emergency department essentially in Wallaceburg to the population, and people just were not having it. And they were using all kinds of manipulative language, and they were saying that they were gonna, you know, how I forgot what it was, whether it was it was an urgent care center or primary care center of some sort and so on. And they they had this sort of survey thing that they had created. And they gave everyone um little like TV remote controls where you could vote for one choice or the other in this survey. And there were literally more than a thousand people in Wallaceburg in this meeting. And so they handed them out down the aisles to everybody and everyone sort of took them. And then they started this survey, and it was ridiculous choices. I mean, nowhere in there was the choice not to close their local hospital services. And so people en masse, we didn't even lead this, I mean, people just did it. They passed all of their little TV remote control things into the center aisles. People went up the aisles, collected them all, and handed them back, literally more than a thousand people. The the entire um gym of this school was full, and there was an overflow room. And everyone just did it, it was the the whole group working in accord, you know, unspoken accord. And they just refused to participate in this kind of false choice that was going to in the end result in the closure of their emergency department. That is seared in my memory, I have told that story across the province. It was amazing. And these were people of every political stripe, I mean, it wasn't about political parties, it was about saving the local hospital. People get it. And we're in a very similar situation now. You know, Doug Ford held a press conference in um mid-January, and he announced that you'll only ever pay with your OHIP card, you're never gonna pay with your credit card, and they're gonna privatize the hospital surgeries and diagnostics and made it sound like it was an add-on rather than a takeaway and made it sound like the status quo is not working, the only choice is to privatize and so on. Just this false narrative um that, you know, that that does not actually reflect reality and never gives the public the choice to actually shore up to, as Shirley said, make vibrant our local public hospitals again, to protect and save their services. But the plan is really terrible. And as Alan was describing, the situation is basically this. The government has just refused to take the measures necessary to fund our public hospitals and to run them properly. So across Ontario, and this applies to your region as well, there are operating rooms that are closed for days or weeks or months at a time or even permanently because they they have underfunded the hospitals, they've closed those services and local hospitals, they've underfunded the hospitals, and they haven't had enough funding to run them, and now they don't have enough staff to run them. They have steadfastly refused to take any meaningful measures to address the staffing crisis that Alan described, the shortage of nurses, which has become the most profound that we have ever seen, really in the history of our province. Um, and uh so nurses, health professionals, and others um who have left by the thousands and are not coming back, in part because there is wage suppression legislation, they just literally risked their lives for all of us through the entire pandemic and under wage suppression legislation, it's it's almost it's unbelievable, you know, and then um nothing, the government has done nothing to deal with the very real issues of impossible workloads. You know, if you're in an emergency department nurse, you go home at night and you lie awake thinking about what mistakes you might have made, whether you forgot something for a patient, whether you did something that might actually kill a patient, that's what that job is like. When you are working four short in an op- in a in a in an emergency department or seven short, as I was hearing the other day from some ER staff, there's no possibility but to just run and try and make it all work. And you know, just pray that you're not gonna make a mistake that is going to kill somebody, you know, while you're at work. That's what this looks like, it looks like patients on the wards, you know, having one nurse for five or one nurse for four when there's supposed to be one nurse for three. It's ICUs where you're supposed to have one nurse monitoring one patient because they're that unstable, that if their vitals change, they can die, and they've doubled them up, you know, it's it's um pediatric units where they're doubling up uh infants, tiny babies with RSV because there's no space left and there's not enough staff to cover them. You know, that's what this looks like. It is dangerous for the staff. They have done it now for years, there's no light at the end of the tunnel, and the government really has done substantially nothing to bring back the people that have retired out, recently retired out, provide them a path back to work. You know, portals, pay for their licenses, get them back in there, provide hope for the staff that are there, some control over their schedules, they've been redeployed for years, they've lost vacations at weekends, they're called in for overtime, literally all the time when they're off, all the time, because they're always short-staffed. And they have to face the stress of saying no, knowing that their colleagues um really, really desperately need them, it's an impossible situation. And it will not get better with just the local hospitals alone trying to recruit staff. This requires a big intervention by the provincial government, kind of like what Quebec did after the first wave of the pandemic where they recruited in in this case, it was PSWs, ten thousand of them in one go. They did fast-track training, they increased their wages, they stabilized the system, they brought them in. Um, and they stabilized the long-term care sector, and they had a much better second wave than we did, we had a much worse second wave, our government refused to do that. And for nurses, because it takes longer to train them, there's no option but try to recruit back the nurses who've retired out or left be from burnout and so on. Um, but it's not happening. Instead, they've held dozens of press conferences saying that they're, you know, fast-tracking international grads and so on, that's literally has been about a thousand. You know, when when, as Alan was saying, it's twenty-five thousand shortage for uh nurses, it's another um across long-term care and hospitals, thirty thousand or so for health professionals and PSWs, it's fifty thousand plus people that were short at this point. Um, and and you know, so it's a drop in the bucket, it's just what governments do when they're pretending to do something but not really doing something. And at the end of the day, the formula is just the old formula. I mean, they underspent the healthcare budget last year by almost a billion dollars, underspent while we were in this situation, refused to do anything substantive about it, and then doubled the funding at the same time for the private for-profit clinics. And then, you know, after the election, immediately after uh the election in which they said they were not privatizing, they announced that they were gonna privatize the hospitals. So it's, you know, create a crisis, run it into the ground, um and then destabilize it. Um, and then, you know, so people can't get the service that they need and then say, oh, we have a crisis, there's no option but to privatize. That's utter nonsense, utter nonsense, and it will de- it will destroy public healthcare for all in our province and in our country if we let it happen. And as Shirley described, it will devastate the local public hospitals, particularly middle-sized and smaller community hospitals, because it's a model of centralizing. I'm just gonna very quickly just re- tell you what the Ford Government announced, so this is what they said. They're gonna move forward with plans to quote significantly expand privatization of surgeries and diagnostics, so the core services of public hospitals in private uh hospitals and clinics. They're going to bring in new legislation to do this, once the legislature reconvenes, and it reconvenes on February the twenty-first. Our assessment is that this is extremely ser- serious, it's very urgent. The Premier said in when he was doing a media scrum that um fifty percent of the their assessment is that fifty percent of the surgeries currently done in hospitals are quote easy, and thus of the, you know, ilk that they say could be transferred out to for-profit clinics. Um, they have already called for bids for three new private day hospitals to do fourteen thousand cataract surgeries initially and then um diagnostics as well, and then expand. They're giving eighteen million in new funding, that's on top of two previous big jumps in funding to expand the existing private uh clinics to cover care for quote thousands of patients. The announcement included more than forty-nine thousand MRI and CT hours, forty uh forty-eight hundred cataracts uh surgeries, nine hundred other eye surgeries, a thousand gynecological surgeries, two thousand eight hundred and forty-five plastic surgeries, blah, blah, blah. I mean, I'm giving you these numbers so you get a sense of the scope of the privatization that we're talking about. They are expanding the number of private clinics and intend to further expand their volumes as well as to expand the types of surgeries that they privatize. Their plan is to privatize hip and knee surgeries um by twenty-twenty-four. So if you think about the Chatham Hospital or you think about the Sarnia Hospital or the Petrolia Hospital or Leamington, you know, what surgeries are left there are the ones, mostly the ones that they wanna privatize. Mostly the ones that they would wanna move out. And this is not an add-on, right, it's a takeaway. They will take the eye surgeries and they're gonna put them in, if if they succeed in this in this um for-profit like mini-day hospital that they're building, that they wanna build in Windsor. And so Petrolia, does it do anything other than eye surgeries? Is that all that's left? So it that's that would be gone. Um, and they would be gone from the entire region, and they would be centralized to that for-profit hospital. And then the same would apply to all the other profitable surgeries. So what the private clinics do is the high volume that, you know, fast-track, the patients that walk in, get their surgery, walk out again. The profitable patients, not the people with diabetes or with COPD or who are overweight or um have heart arrhythmias or might code on the operating room table, not the complex patients, but the fast-track profitable patients in our public hospitals, those patients subsidize the more complex patients, that's how it works. Um, and so if you take all of that out of the public hospitals and they lose the nurses and they lose the health professionals to private clinics that only run nine to five, you know, and um so on, then they've lost the funding, they've lost the staff, they've lost the easy surgeries, they're left with the complex patients that are more expensive with less staff and resources to provide for them. In those hospitals that have already lost all of the surgeries except for the light and easy surgeries, they lose all remaining core services. And with them go the doctors, because why would they stay in a town where they can't do their surgeries? Um, and the health system, the remaining health system kind of goes into a vicious spiral down, that is the consequence of this policy. It's the antithesis, the opposite of building up our local public community hospitals and providing services there. There is another way, of course, to provide for the volumes that we need of surgeries and diagnostics to um clear the backlogs, and that is to fund up and staff up the local public hospitals to run at capacity. And we have more than enough operating room time available across Ontario in our public hospitals if the government chose to actually fund it and support it. Um, and so this is a political choice. We think it will be devastating to your local hospitals. Um, and we also know that it will be devastating to single-tier public healthcare for all. So this is just my last sort of point. And that is that we have called every private clinic, you know, different provinces have allowed this to happen to different extents. Um, and um and you know, most across Canada, the vast majority of surgeries and diagnostics are done in public hospitals, but some provinces have allowed in private clinics, and even Ontario has allowed private cataract surgery clinics and so on. We've called all the private clinics across the country twice. We posed as patients, we said, I need a shoulder surgery, I wanna, I I don't wanna wait, I wanna jump the queue, how much can I pay to jump the queue? And they told us, we caught the majority of them violating the Canada Health Act and charging patients for medically needed services. Under the Canada Health Act, you are not allowed to charge a patient for a medically needed hospital and physician service, you cannot charge a patient for access to a doctor. You can't charge a patient for a s- a surgery or for an MRI if it's medically needed, you're not allowed to do that. And the clinics openly, flagrantly violate the law, the prices are ludicrous. Ten times the cost of the public health system to buy a a shoulder surgery in a private clinic in Canada, and actually, the prices have gone up astronomically. And so in some cases, it's literally a thousand times the cost of the public system. In for cataract surgery clinics routinely, they're charging two thousand dollars an eye for cataract surgery, a a surgery that under OHIP is billed five hundred and fifty dollars for a cataract surgery, and that doctor is probably also, that private clinic is probably also billing OHIP. So they're charging the patient and billing OHIP too for the same service. For MRIs, the private clinics routinely start at a thousand dollars. Add in contrast, the price goes up, add in body parts, the the price goes up. In the public system, when we ramp up MRIs in our public hospitals, like run the machines longer, et cetera, we um we uh it costs two hundred and eighty to three hundred and fifty dollars, a third of the cost of the starting cost in the private clinics. Not only do they violate the Canada Health Act and the principle that public healthcare be provided based on need, not how wealthy you are, that when you're sick, when you're old, when you're dying, when you're least able to pay, you should never be charged for medically needed hospital or physician services. That's what Canadians won when we won public Medicare. And these clinics, these private clinics and hospitals pose an existential threat to the future of single-tier healthcare in this country. I'm getting emotional because I'm frightened. I haven't seen this sort of situation where we face such um a very serious challenge, where we risk losing our public Medicare for all in such a serious way and in which the fight um, you know, if we were to lose it, would be almost impossible to turn around. You know, we've now seen with, you know, the Harris Government came, they privatized home care. It's been a disaster ever since, they privatized long-term care, all of us have seen the travesty that is for-profit long-term care that has rolled out across this province. And now the Ford Government is coming for the hospitals, and we've never been able to push back out the for-profits in long-term care, we've not been able to do it in home care. We'll never stop fighting, but I don't wanna be in a position where we're fighting to get them out, once they're in, it's very, very difficult to do. So we need to fight to stop them from doing this. And I think we can do it. Um, I realize, sorry about being emotional, but I do actually really believe truly that we can do it. We need to give the arguments to people, we need to provide a way for them to make visible their opposition to this. I believe the vast majority of people in our communities would oppose this if they understood what the issue was, if they understood that it was coming at the cost of their local public hospitals. Um, and if they understood um that that, you know, that they risk losing public healthcare and are gonna have to pay for it as a result, those things are all true. We need to provide a way to have volunteers explain that en masse to people. And then we need to provide a way that people can um make their opposition known and make it visible. So what we wanted to to ask people today is, will you join in holding a province-wide referendum? This government has no mandate to do this, they ran an election lying, saying they weren't going to do it. So let's take the choice to the people. Let's set a voting date, say for, we're proposing the end of May. May twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, that's a Friday, Saturday, the weekend after the long weekend. We could have workplace votes in every workplace, you know, that we can in the two weeks leading in. So in the hospitals with the hospital workers, in the factories with the factory workers, in the nonprofit organizations, in the municipalities, in the schools, you know, everywhere that we can hold workplace votes, ask the unions, will you take ballot boxes around to your workers in the hospitals? In the non-union workplaces, you know, will the owner, you will the will the staff voluntarily do it, or will the owner do it um to help save our local hospital services? Um, can we put um voting stations around the community? Um, can we put um voting stations around the community in busy places on the Friday night? So um coffee shops and um at the Legion and um outside grocery stores and you know, other busy local community stores and things like that. Um, and then on the Saturday as well, cuz it's a big um, uh shopping day. Can we do online voting for the two weeks, advance polls online for the two weeks leading in? And can we try to get a huge vote? Like a large petition in Ontario is about twenty thousand signatures. I believe we could get a million votes against the privatization of our hospitals. And to to demand that the government support our local public hospitals. I believe that we could do that. Uh, we have in the Health Coalition alone, we have almost a million members, we have eight hundred thousand plus uh members uh within our coalition. So we should be able to do that. That would shake any government of any political strike. And it could be enough to stop the four government from moving forward with their plans to privatize um public healthcare. And if it's okay, Shirley, before we open it up for discussion, I just have a very quick three-minute video to show you what that looks like. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we did this before. We did it to stop a a kind of it was a big kind of half-step towards full privatization of the hospitals. It was called Public Private Partnerships or P-three privatization of the um public hospitals. We did it in eight towns. And in those eight towns alone, we got almost two hundred thousand votes, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand votes. Ninety-eight percent of which were against privatizing the hos- that that form of privatization of the hospitals. And the government actually rolled back the privatization massively in those deals. Um, they still privatized the finance of the hospitals, but they didn't privatize all their services for thirty years and so on. So without getting into the weeds of explaining what that um that, you know, what a P-three is. We did hold these referendums and they were incredibly effective and powerful. So I just wanna show you, they did a video, it was actually a union um in Kingston did the video. And um, and it really kind of shows what it looked like on the ground. So this is it. I'm just gonna share my screen if that's okay. And it's just three minutes, so it's very quick. Okay. Okay, here it is.
This looks very much like an election campaign, except it's not. It's a plebiscite vote that's actually citizen-run, not government-run. It's put together by the Ontario Health Coalition, asking citizens if they want a public or a private hospital.
If, well, the drivers have extra ballots, so if they need more, like if they've run out in their trucks, then I will let them know you guys have some extra.
The phone's been non-stop, people are interested, uh they want to learn more. Um, they've been very supportive of the campaign. We've had very little people coming in upset about what we're doing.
Well, we're holding a community-wide plebiscite, which is a community-wide vote, like a referendum. Only it's organized by Citizens Group, by the Kingston Health Coalition. Um, about the future of the new hospital in Kingston, whether it's gonna be a public, not-for-profit hospital or whether it'll be built as a P-three, privatized P-three hospital with thirty-year-long contracts with a private for-profit multinational consortium.
Uh, some people wonder how this affects healthcare. They say, well, the healthcare system remains public because nurses and doctors will be paid by the government. But the model of the P-three hospital is a is a step in quite a dangerous direction.
Some of the more conservative members of a council have tried to argue that uh we shouldn't have any role in it as municipal councillors because it's a provincial issue.
So we're very concerned in the city of Kingston about uh, well about uh where are where is the money from our property taxpayers going? And uh it turns out that it's going to uh to fund a consortium that over time will make twelve percent uh on their invested money. So uh that twelve percent is, part of that twelve percent is coming from our property taxpayers.
It's been really positive. It's actually really cool. People are pretty excited, especially when they hear that there's a hundred and eighty other volunteers out there on the ground uh doing this as well. Uh, it's just such an incredible feeling of solidarity, everybody. Even though they've been out there in the cold for an eight-hour day, they're, they have no problem doing it. They're having fun and having a great time.
It's been very hectic, super hectic. Um, we had three volunteers here for most of the day. And we barely had a chance to have a drink of coffee and we're right here in Tim Hortons, so that just goes to tell you how busy we've been.
All the businesses have just been so warming and welcome to allow us to be able to sit up these polls. It's been a great, great um, great commitment by the businesses here in Kingston.
It was a huge victory. And you know, you talk to people on the street, everybody knows what's happening. It's now become a public issue. And it wasn't, two months ago, nobody even knew we were getting a new hospital. So we've elevated the debate and the public sort of discussion and the democracy around this healthcare policy to a level which is phenomenal. That's the value in a sense of validating that whole discussion, all that work that was done. And then as the next step forward, we're gonna be able to say to the government and the politicians, you know, this community really cares. We want a public healthcare system.
So that's what it looks like. So it's volunteers outside local stores and things like that, asking people to vote, ballots with a question. People sign a pledge form saying that they'll only vote once with their postal code, et cetera. And um, and then we have like municipal councillors, retired MPPs, you know, lawyers, judges, schoolteachers, et cetera, people, um, you know, who have credibility in the community, counting the votes. And we release the results and the legislature is gonna be sitting till June the first. So the idea would be to release the results on the Monday, which is the twenty-eighth of um May. Uh, and then bring, you know, all of those million ballots, you know, down into the Ontario Legislature and demand that the four government stop um the privatization of the hospitals. So uh we wanted to talk about that with you today. We wanted to see if people wanted to volunteer to help. And I don't know if you can see in your, if you're not used to Zoom, in the bottom kind of line but at the bottom of your screen, there's a thing that's called chat. And you can click on that and you can type in a message. So if you wanna volunteer to help, you know, find a a local store that will host a ballot box. Um, you volunteer to sit at the ballot box and, you know, help people uh when they come to vote. Um, you know, collect boxes from the LCBO so we can have enough ballot boxes, do a vote in your workplace. You know, all of those things um uh to help make this happen. There's something every single person can do and we're not asking people to do more than you could, you know, are able to do. But there is something fairly simple and doable for everyone to do. And um, and doc, maybe we could discuss that tonight. Uh, and then kind of um go through if people wanna help, how we wanna do it locally. So I'll turn it back over to Shirley and thank you for listening.
Uh, I see we have some questions in the chat. Uh, if you want to volunteer. Um, could you provide me or could you pu- provide me with your email address too? So that I can contact you?
We have it, Shirley. Everyone's registered, so we have their contacters. So they just need to say that they wanna volunteer, it's all good.
See, see, we really do need some more nurses because I'm just beside myself. Uh, the first question, i- is this vote strictly in person or can it be done digitally? So I thought we were going to set it up for digital voting. Right now?
Yeah, I think we should definitely do an online vote and so um as well. But we need the on-the-ground vote because it has like a huge visibility and impact on the community. You know, it gets lots of people volunteering, it's very visible. Everyone then starts to know that this issue is happening and so on. But so both.
Okay. It doesn't, and this is the second comment, it doesn't help with the nurse shortage when the government uh CPSO and CNO brought into the big bought into the biggest scam in medical history, which cost the jobs of physicians and nurses. Let's stop the censorship and open the entire COVID narrative to debate. When the truth and the real science is revealed, this alone will return hundreds of nurses and encourage others to enter the career of nursing.
I think Rene Jacques has his hand up. I don't know if you saw that.
Oh, yeah. All right, Rene?
Yeah, first off, what was the date again?
So the on-the-street votes, we're proposing to do May the twenty-sixth, which is a Friday, and the twenty-seventh. The, the like workplace voting, we could do for two weeks or something leading in. So from mid-May to to the, to that weekend. And then if it's in schools, like say we wanted to do votes in high school, I have a question I have to ask you about that, but uh in high schools and in um colleges and so on. We would need to do it while the colleges are still open um before exams. So that would be the end of March. They would need to have an advanced voting station. Um, end of March.
Have you worked with labor councils uh throughout the province uh to coordinate this effort?
Yes, I just met with uh, I'm, I'm going to be meeting with the Chatham Kent Labor Council of next month and I've already met with Unifor in Chatham Canton, they're on board.
All right, but if we do it uh uh province-wide through the OFAL, we can have, uh try and get all of the labor councils on board to do it in the cities through, through labor, which has representation in most of the factories and schools.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, the, we've um have asked the Ontario Federation of Labor, the OFAL to um support. They have said that they would support. Um, we have, will be, as we kind of move forward, we're just, this is the very initial stages of rolling this out. But we'll be asking them to send it out. But in most places, we have local health coalitions. So the local health coalition will be the coordinating group and they'll work with, because we're community, like we're a community group, right? We work, uh obviously, we support and work with labor. Um, but we also, all of the community groups and the seniors organizations, and I see Trish McAuliffe is here as well from the National Pensioners Federation and, you know, the whole range. So we'll do both, Renee, like we'll, we'll definitely do that. And um also um all of the community organizations and faith organizations and so on as well.
Well, I would, I would think that you should be contacting the um your partners in the different municipalities, because like we had a labor council meeting last night and nothing was said about this. Although we do have a demonstration coming up next Thursday here in Windsor.
Okay. Well, we're just getting started, so hopefully it'll come to your next meeting. I assume you you meet monthly.
Yes, uh, that's the Windsor District Labor Council.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, there was a comment in the chat, what about churches? Um, I've contacted uh faith groups and will be meeting with them because we're just starting, right? Probably next month, March, I'll be doing some presentations for them.
But we're also hoping like part of this meeting is not to sort of say, why don't you do this, why don't you do this? Like collectively, we are all gonna need to do this to make it work. So if, for example, you're part of a labor council or if you're part of a church, could you help us bring it forward to that church? Could you bring it forward to that organization? You know, if you're part of a seniors group, et cetera. You know, if you're in a legion, you know, could we, could we get a voting ballot box in that legion on the Friday night, you know, or you know, those sorts of things. So we're hoping that all of us can sort of bring those ideas together and do them together.
Uh, I'm willing to help here locally, but what I'm saying is we need somebody from the organization who knows where you want stuff, when you want it, how it's gonna be distributed and whatnot, so that we can uh handle it through labor council and and pass it on to our affiliates and whatnot.
Perfect, yeah. Thanks Renee, for sure, for sure.
Okay.
It's very fun. It's really actually very exciting to do. I hope people wanna do it.
Um, are there other questions? I don't see any other hands up.
I see Kathy, I see people are volunteering in the chat.
Yes, they are.
Yay, okay. Trish has her hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Trish.
Hi, everybody. Good to see everyone here involved. I know that there are plenty others that couldn't be on the call. Um, I do know that Windsor just had a meeting on the ninth of February and fortunately, Renee, um, you might have not uh knew that the Windsor Coalition is back up and operating, but I'm sure you can connect with them. Um, that's Tracy Ramsey and Pam Strong. Um, but I've, you know, I'd be happy to present to any, you know, any community group. I'll share any resources that you have. Shirley, Natalie, um on behalf of the seniors in Ontario and across Canada, as a National Pensioners Federation, we have endorsed many campaigns across Canada. It's not just happening here, as you've seen in the uh, in the premier's meetings. Um, this is a slippery slope for everyone and we certainly don't want to be the the role model that other provinces use in order to uh privatize the services, especially the seniors. This is a very volatile time as uh people are aging and aging with chronic, chronic illnesses and putting the labor on the backs of their family members to take care of us uh in 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 this dire time of our life. We need to be assured that the um, you know, what we've put into, whether it's through fundraising or taxes. Uh, a hard-earned time and interest to raise the public and be proud of the public healthcare system in Canada and Ontario. You know, seniors lead the pack on that pride. And you know, some of us may be too frail to get out there and do some of this work, but we all know someone. And we all know those caregivers and if we reach out to those folks each and then every one of us, um, you know, I'd be happy to share your stories. I'd be happy to uh make sure that your voices are heard if you wanna contact me. Um, I will definitely go and and shout from the rooftops, uh Natalie, Shirley, anything that I can do on behalf of the uh the seniors and persons, uh older persons with rights to healthcare. We need to do all we can. So uh I'm, I'm so excited about this. And I have participated in Oshawa on a plebiscite for saving hospital services. And it was a two-day event and I'll tell you, um there's nobody that walks by that table and doesn't place a ballot. So it's an easy day uh to get out there and meet your neighbors and uh stand up for something that's right for all Canadians. So thank you for all your effort and and I'm, I'm sad to see you emotional about this, Natalie, but I know uh it's, it should be as emotional for all of us and it certainly is. We share, we share your feelings on this. It's our fight and we need to rise.
Uh, Trish, thank you so much. So we will, actually, we need to meet with you because we, we should talk about how, I mean, you represent about a million seniors, right? It's and more than half of them in Ontario. So thank you. These are weighty words, Trish, and um we, we should actually just set up a meeting and figure out how we can sort of um really get people involved and and really work together to the best that we can and we would love to have you speak.
Yeah, I'll do anything I can, Natalie, you know that.
Renee, did you have another question?
Um, just another comment, uh have you thought about uh getting in touch with CARP? Canadian uh something or other retired persons?
Yeah, so the thing about CARP is that, well, they used to be, I don't know if they still are, but funded by the pharmaceutical industry. And um, they, so they have not generally supported fights against the privatization of healthcare. But the local chapters have, like this is sort of the central body. Though, so in Windsor, for example, the local chapter is very, very supportive indeed and quite amazing. So if there are, you know, we should definitely get in touch with them in Windsor. And if there are any other local chapters around where the members would be interested in helping, we should definitely do that.
Okay, uh Kathy Cunningham?
Yes, um, a question for Trish, since she works with a lot of the pensioners. Does she know whether or not the um active lifestyle and and senior centers or leisure centers um allow um issues like this to be Um issues like this to be brought into their organizations. You know, so that we could put up. Tables and. Take votes there.
Natalie, I don't know if you want to discuss that.
And I can supplement if if needed.
Yeah, um. You know, we as as an organization, we represent larger senior uh group advocacy groups. Um so we definitely have uh. Feet on the street sort of advocates to get out there and do some of this work. And I think it's up to each one of those individuals to approach their local community center. Senior center, I know my experience of. Uh a past Harper government, that was something that some senior groups uh any group, any organization feared. Interfering politically with anything. But um I think on this ground on saving public healthcare. Uh I believe their doors would be wide open to any kind of support that they could give. Especially for seniors. I don't think they want to be the one to say, oh, no, we don't want to be involved. Um the seniors in that location probably not uh. Not look. Wouldn't be favorable for them.
Yeah, I think some places like our experiences. Some places will say yes, like you saw that picture from Kings and Bennett's grocery store. It's like a local franchise of a of a chain, right? And so they said yes, but then sometimes the big chains, you can't do it. So you might be able to like at your local um. Like in Chatham at the um Canadian Tire, you know, the local owner may say yes. Um but like sometimes they won't. And the same, I think, applies to the senior centers, you know, depends on kind of how conservative they are, how. Much they care about the local hospitals. It also depends on how you ask them the question. Like this is really about saving the local public hospital services. And stopping them from being privatized. That's what it's about. It's a democratic vote, you know, I think some of like. Sometimes that just the way you ask also, you know, um makes it. Um less frightening for them, so um so yeah, it varies for sure. Definitely, you know, corner stores, like if you have a corner store that you go to a lot and they know you. You know, chances are they're gonna say yes, and they're busy. Where if there's one with a gas station, they're super busy. You get, you know, three hundred, four hundred votes at that place in one day, you know, or um. Like a Tim Hortons for sure, super busy. And then other places where they're not gonna say yes, like the LCBOs where they'd say, well, we have to contact central office and. They're just never gonna say yes. We can have kind of roving. Voting stations, so like people with ballot boxes, we just use this kind of Medicare ribbon that we had to put them. Over our shoulders and we just ask people to vote. Um and we had clipboard so they could do it on on the street. And then um you know, so we could kind of move around if they and not be right, standing right next to the door, but get people. Going into and out of the parking lot, like we can do those kinds of things as well in places where we can't get a yes to have a. Table that, you know, is sitting right outside the door.
Yeah, if if I could Natalie, I think what was successful in Oshawa was that we had a kit. And it was an information kit, we knocked on a few doors based on the number of volunteers that were in my group. And then we said, this is how we can schedule ourselves between three different sites for small group. And so we armed that location with a bit of a kid and information about what it is. And once they know what it is in advance, then they've, you know, there's a little less um fear or unknown for them. And then just give them a sense of where you'll set up, or they'll tell you where you could set up. And then the times that you plan to be there, so it takes a little bit of preparation in advance. So that you're kind of systematically, you know, set up a relationship with that particular person. And the most success that we had. Um was primarily the the credit unions, Natalie, they were um. Uh amazing supporters of community and I know this fight already for most part. Um definitely, uh.
Oh, good idea.
One that I would I would target if. If I was unsure in my first time. Just from my experience, I would send the folks that are new with someone that has perhaps done this before. But most importantly, go to your community, you know, the community centers, the people that really support. Seniors and 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 healthcare, and that's definitely uh credit unions.
Okay. Any other questions?
I had one for everyone.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this, I just want to get your opinion, and I'm not promising anything, because I have to consult everywhere about this. But we're trying to decide, should we say um that people sixteen and over can vote? Or people eighteen and over can vote? So like, should the cutoff age be sixteen, do you think, or should it be eighteen? And um so I'm gonna ask the question. First, I'm gonna ask who supports sixteen, then I'm gonna ask who supports eighteen. Can you use at the bottom of your screen, there's a reactions button? If you click on that. There's a raise hand thing at the bottom of the little box that comes up. Wait, don't raise your hand yet, I have to tell you the question. Um so uh and then you can lower your hand when we're done, so let me ask the first question first. So use the raise hand function, okay? Who supports, sorry? Go ahead, Shirley.
I'm just asking Kathy to take her hand down handyly. Until the question is asked.
Okay. Sorry, so who supports sixteen to be the voting age? Yeah, they could do it without a parent. And then, okay, can you put your hands back down?
Sorry to interrupt, but um why sixteen and not fourteen? Because they can uh gain. Medical care without a parent when they're fourteen. Like that's the the age of consent, right?
Okay, I can add in a third question. So let's let's start again, wipe that out. I'll ask fourteen first, Dave, Dave, Davah, Dave, Dave, can you put down your hand? Or Britt, can you put down that person's hand? Um so first I'll ask fourteen, then I'll ask sixteen, then I'll ask eighteen. Okay, so those people who are advocating for sixteen. Everyone who's sixteen at the time of this vote will be a a voting age apparently as of. The next election. Um those who wanted eighteen were worried about the credibility of the vote and wanted, you know, it to be a higher age. Uh those who want a fourteen are saying it's the age of consent for healthcare for some things, so. Um I'm gonna, can we put down Davah's hand or no? Okay, there we go. Um so first I'm gonna ask fourteen, raise your hand, and then I'm gonna ask sixteen, then I'm gonna ask eighteen, okay, so fourteen. Who wants fourteen? Okay, you can put your hands back down. Thank you. Who wants sixteen? Okay. Okay, you can put your hands back down, thank you. And who wants eighteen? Okay, I think it's more for sixteen. Okay, I'm taking this back, okay, because I'm just, I'm asking as we're going around, I have to um draft up the question and. Consult on it, I have to consult on the age with the local coalitions across the province and our board. And then we'll come up with sort of the framework of who can vote, et cetera, based on. Your feedback, and I mean, obviously, there's a lot of different opinions about it, but thank you very much for that. That I have some other questions, but they're not voting questions, it's just. Um if you have ideas, like for example. Workplaces where we might be able to get a workplace vote happening, you know? Could you put them in the chat? If you have ideas that would be good voting stations. In your community. Can you put that in the chat? If you can help with any of this stuff, like. Getting tables for voting stations or chairs or helping to put up lawn signs, because I think we should put up lawn signs for the month leading in. Oh, maybe we can mute that line? Um may uh, sorry. I'll just, okay. Um if you can, uh if you have community groups that you might be able to get a speaker into or things like that, could you? Identify that in the chat, because it'll help as we organize. And then the next steps going forward would be to hold a big, like a giant regional meeting. To roll, uh like to launch and roll out. The referendums across southwestern Ontario, so from London all the way down. And just concretely talk about organizing them, identify key volunteers. In all of the small towns that we can, so if you if you're from a smaller community. And are might be able to get a voting station or two in your town, could you put that in the chat? But we'll do that in the sort of in the large regional Zoom meeting, so online meeting, and then in person. Mobilizing meetings or organizing meetings in each town. Like in as many towns as we can. So the big Zoom meeting would be late March, we'll have all the materials produced. Ready to go and sort of a walkthrough of how to do it and just kind of go through the concrete stuff with everyone. Then um in-person meetings in like Chatham, Wallaceburg, Sarnia. Any places in between, Leamington, you know, everywhere that we can to um actually get. The vote happening in that town town and the towns around. Um in person at the beginning of April. And we would do a media launch then, beginning of April, so announce that, you know, this town or this community is joining into the media, the dates of the vote. The list of voting stations where people can vote. We'd have leaflets, so we would start leafleting in busy places and going door to door and so on with leaflets. If someone wants to volunteer to drive rural routes and put leaflets in mailboxes. That would be totally handy as well, you know, any of those sorts of things. Um and then um you know, work towards have the workplace ba- ballot boxes go out mid-May. Votes on the street end of May. Um and then announce the results, um uh the the uh the Monday or the Tuesday after the big votes. Does this all make sense and sound good to people? You. Okay.
I have a.
No, no, that's good, thank you, Shirley.
I have a couple of uh. Things to say tomorrow, Thursday, February sixteenth at seven PM. The Chatham Kent Health Coalition along with. Wallaceburg and the Sarnia Lampton Health Coalition are having a Zoom meeting. Uh it's our monthly meeting, but we will obviously be focusing on. Um more organizing and recruitment of volunteers to support this campaign. Any of you that uh want to come, I'll make sure that you have the Zoom link. Now, I just. I know we're getting close to the end. We're talking about hospitals, and that's a place where. You know, science is used and and uh. You know, people rely on facts in order to. Um. Provide care to those that are ill. But it's something we haven't really talked about, and that is. The compassion and the loyalty. Of people to their hospitals. That's certainly true in this area, and I know it's true in in places like Toronto. Um. I once had an argument with a guy when I was working in the Well City Emergency. Uh and the ambulance had brought him to us, and he said, well, you you can damn well put me back on the ambulance stretcher and take me to Toronto General. That's my hospital. But I I just wanted to say just. Two quick things about the loyalty. Uh and the love that people have for their community hospitals. When I was still working in emergency in Wallaceburg, we were having uses prior to two thousand and nine. We had an extremely busy night. Very, very busy, we called extra staff in. And uh at. At this one particular time, we were trying to resuscitate a fellow whose heart had stopped. And there was a a nurse from the medical floor that came down to help, and she came into this. Very busy, very chaotic. Scene. And she said, Shirley. There's a guy here and he wants to buy some Vaseline, his dog has uh. Eaten some antifreeze. So we gave this guy. The Vaseline. Do you think you're ever going to get that sort of treatment? At a at a for-pay clinic? We did that, we did not get any money for it, we. We did it because. It was the right thing to do. This is the last one. Two AM in a snowstorm in Wallaceburg and knock on the back door, and here's this woman who is. Who has brought a baby in because she has run out of Tylenol. And we had just had a big push on by administration saying, no, no, you give them a script and they go out and buy it. This young mother did not have the money. To buy any Tylenol when she came to the hospital. We gave her baby the Tylenol, we gave the baby a little bit of orange juice. We gave the mother some orange juice, and we put them both on a stretcher with warm blankets till the morning. In the morning, the baby's uh temperature was normal. And uh we gave the mother a little bottle of Tylenol, again. Would you get caring like that in a private clinic? I want everybody to join us, and please tell tell your neighbors and your friends. Go and tell your enemies, I don't care. Let's just get a lot of volunteers out to save public hospitals. Thank you.
Yay. There's lots of volunteers in the chat, it's really exciting, actually. Thank you for the ideas and the comments and everything there, we're gonna save that. Someone was asking for an email address to send more info to to like ideas and info. We put that in the chat, but we'll also send an email out tomorrow. To everybody who registered for this meeting with the contact info and the follow-up. For people um so that you can, you know, get back in contact and. Have concrete things to move, you know, to help move this forward. Okay?
If there are no more questions. Again, sincerely, we thank you for coming. Uh very, we're excited, we're excited. I'm not too excited about going to the LCBO to ask for boxes, but I'm going to. And if. If anyone wants a lawn sign, we're gonna use the same ones, right Natalie?
Yeah. We can show a picture, yeah.
I've uh I have approximately a hundred or a hundred and twenty lawn signs in my car.
Sorry, I'm just showing the lawn sign. Momento. Sorry, here it is.
Here it is. There.
And we can get a sticker with the date of the referendum on it.
Yeah. And those are going to be provided down the road, right?
Yeah. And June, I think June is on camera.
Okay. June?
So. Sorry. Um I was just typing in the thing in the comment in the chat that I have some boxes, but I have put my email address. Um on the contact list as well.
Yes.
Sorry, I said we'll do this again on Saturday for Sarnia Lampton. Saturday morning at ten.
Yeah. Get on that, I may say the same damn speech. Thank you so much, everyone locally, thank you Shirley and June and Judy and Trish and. All of you. Lorraine, there you are, sorry, everyone uh who has, you know, kept this coalition together and. Put all of this work, oops, Elaine has her hand up.
Just a quick one, can we get some of those new signs that I've seen on your, like I I saw it flash there. We're raising money for signs.
Yeah, yes, for sure, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're great. Thank you so much to all of you locally. Who do such an amazing job, you are the strength. Of our movement, the government knows they have to be worried about this, that's why they're rolling out so much. PR and so on to try and sell it to people and soften them up for privatization. So thank you, we are the sort of line that protects, you know, the the public from the, you know, the Americanization of our healthcare system. It's you and me and all of us and people like Shirley and June and. Lorraine and Judy and Trish and, you know, all of you who lead in your communities and do um do all of this. So just the biggest heartfelt thanks. Have a wonderful night.
Yes, bye bye, everybody.
Bye bye. Thanks, Shirley.
Thank you, Britt, for for doing all this, our staffers and Britt, yay.